Good evening, and welcome to our June 14th Regular City Commission Meeting. This evening during our period of private meditation, if you would remember the victims and the families of Orlando shooting. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is consideration of previous minute meetings.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the May 24th regular meeting minutes. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Begin voting Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. Second consideration ordinances. These will be all roll call votes. Ordinance number 7994 amending the 2015 Uniform Public Offense Code, changing the age of selling, giving, or furnishing cigarettes or tobacco products to anyone under the age of 21. Is there any additional comments by any members of the commission before our call roll?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, one, I think, for the city manager about the date of implementation.
Yes.
Yeah, one note, nothing's changed in the ordinance since the May 24th meeting. However, the ordinance has an effective start date of July 1. So should this pass tonight, I believe in speaking with city clerk and the police chief, that's a little quick for everybody to get up to speed. So the ordinance doesn't have to be amended, but the roll call vote, if it could be with a start date of, I would suggest September 1st.
Right.
Would probably be fair.
Okay. Then I want to call a roll call vote with a starting date of September 1st of 2016 for the new ordinance. Begin voting Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
No.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
That passes three to two. Excuse me. Ordinance 7995 Special Use Permit, 4200 South 4th.
This ordinance has not changed from the first reading, and as a reminder, it's the solar panels on the parking lot at St. Mary's.
Any additional questions by the commission? If not, begin voting Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Ordinance number 7996 is to adopt the 2016 Development Regulation.
This item has also not changed since the first consideration reading. This is the re-doing of development regulations to a more user-friendly format as presented at the last commission meeting.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
No, just to thank you for making it more user-friendly. I've waited through it finally. But it really is. It's a much, much more user-friendly document.
Begin voting Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Item number five, ordinance 7997, is to rescind special use permits.
And finally, again, the ordinance has not changed from its first consideration reading. There are no changes, and if there's any questions, Carly can answer them on this item.
Seeing no questions, begin voting Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Under new business is citizen participation. This is where anyone in the audience may come up to the podium and tell us what's on your mind for anything other than what's on the agenda. Seeing no takers, we will move on. General items, Neighborhood Stabilization Program grant update.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, if you'll remember, in September of 2015, the city commission approved a third-party contract to finish out our Neighborhood Stabilization Program grant. We had about $275,000. The goal was to try to do one more house. Over the years, we've done nearly $2 million worth of new houses and renovations. The program is coming to an end this year. Unfortunately, our contract with the third party didn't result in us acquiring a house. At this point, any monies spent after January 1st would have to have a city match, and I don't think we're interested in doing that. We still have a property that needs a couple repairs, an existing one, and we'll be able to accomplish those, but I don't think we'll be able to undertake a new house. So I'm asking that we close out the program after we make the needed repairs to the properties that we have, and that we return any unused money back to the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Did you want the data attached to that, or?
We're still working on the fixes, but we will return the money by the end of the year.
Okay. Any questions by the commission?
No. No, it was a good program. You don't know why we could use it, but, you know, consider that.
Okay. Roll call vote, begin with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Aye. Actually, this needs to be.
Oh, that's a motion.
Sorry.
Yep, I was on the wrong line.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we.
Rescind?
Rescind or, did we send, uh, not return unused, return unused monies for the NSP program, as the city manager stated.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Begin voting Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 That passes. Resolutions and ordinances, proceeding for 2016 General Obligation Refund and Improvement Bonds and Temporary Notes.
Carly?
Okay. The issue before the city commission is consider the proceedings for the A 2016 Temporary Notes and the 2016 A General Obligation Refunding and Improvement Bonds. Each of you have in front of you a memorandum from Greg Barnberg. He's the city's financial advisor, and I'll recap the information that he's provided from the bids that we did the opening on. As part of the process of issuing both notes and bonds, we requested a bond rating be assigned to the issue, and the city worked with Moody's Investor Service to assign a rating, and Moody's affirmed that the city had a AA2 bond rating. That rating is well above average for cities in Kansas and throughout the country. At 11 o'clock this morning, the city conducted a competitive sale, and the bids were received for the notes and bonds. There were two bids for the notes, and those bids, the low bid was from Country Club Bank, and the interest rate is 1.03203 percent. That was the low bid. The second bid was from Commerce Bank, and it was for 1.205358. There were seven bids for the bonds, and they were as follows. I'll read those. UMB Bank, 1.661167. Robert Baird Company, 1.663836. FTN Financial Capital Market, 1.707064. First Bankers Bank Securities, 1.725467. Commerce Bank, 1.736211. Stifel Nicolaus and Company, 1.823023. Wells Fargo Bank, 1.870419. UMB Bank was the low bid. As noted by Mr. Barnberg in his memorandum, we couldn't have picked a better time to sell our bonds. There was an all-time low on interest rates, so we got a wonderful rate today. In addition to the regular bond issuance we did, we refinanced the 2011 A General Obligation Bonds. We, he conservatively estimated that it would save the city between $70,000 to $90,000. After the bid opening today, the actual savings to the city is going to be $140,172.22. The issue, I mean, the proceedings are going to require four different actions from the commission this evening. The first one is going to be a motion to accept the bids. The second is a motion to accept the resolution. The third is roll call vote on the ordinance, and the fourth is the acceptance of the second resolution. If you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
Any questions of city clerk?
Nope.
Pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, then we need a motion to accept a proposal of the A 2016 Temporary Notes General Obligation Bonds.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Begin voting Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Item B is Resolution B 2139, issuance of A 2016 Temporary Notes. Need a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Begin voting Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Also passes five to zero. Item C, second consideration ordinance number 7998, General Obligation Refunding and Improvement Bond Series 2016. This is a roll call. Begin with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Resolution B 2140, General Obligation Improvement Bond Series 2016 A. Need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Motion and second. Begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 That passes also five to zero. Under business contracts and agreements, bid for Kansas State Rehabilitation Tax Credits.
Finance Director, handle this item.
Oh, mayors commissioners, the issue before us is that the city of Landmark is in possession of $117,255 in Kansas State Rehabilitation Tax Credits. Since the city pays no state tax, we have no use for these credits, and in order to receive any benefit from them, we need to sell them. So we, the background on that is that in December 2015, we completed $469,000 of qualifying expenditures on renovations to relieve this severe distress on the Parapet on City Hall. And after review, the Kansas State Rehabilitation, the Kansas State Preservation Society decided that we qualified credits on those expenditures, and that's, they refunded us 25 percent of the cost of those. And based on the procedures we did before, we sent out RFPs for the tax credits, and we received four bids back. The bids came from Henry Block, private citizen, $11,685.39. RLI Insurance Company, $107,874.60. Commerce Bank, $106,702.05. And CE Capital Partners, OLC, $103,770.68. Since the largest amount offered for the credits was the bid from Mr. Block, we, the staff recommends that the city accept that bid.
Any questions, finance director?
One quick question. I'm obviously in favor selling this to Mr. Block, but I didn't, I didn't fully realize that a private citizen can buy these tax credits. Let's say, let's say I bought them, and I'm not about to buy any. How can I use them? I know how a business can, but how can a private citizen use them?
You can offset your state tax obligation.
Yeah.
That's how we fund our FCDC program, is we sell tax credits, and mostly who buys them are CPAs in town, and then they use them on behalf of their clients to decrease their, their tax obligation.
Okay.
Mark, we, Terry and I have taken advantage of.
You've, you've bought these before, so you, you get, call $125,000, pay $111,000, so you make $14,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You get a tax, it's like a, it's like a deduction.
Okay, I, I thought you had to apply it to a building or something, but you can use it straight on taxes, just on state taxes, not federal, obviously.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I'm just curious.
Thank you. Need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the bid from Henry Block in the amount of $111,685.39 for these Kansas State Rehabilitation Tax Credit Sale.
Second.
And motion and second. Begin voting Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Item number nine, Contract Number 2014-57, An Addendum Number Two to EQUIS Agreement. Paul?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, the development agreement with between the city and EQUIS Hospitality Management states that they must commence construction nine months after closing on the property. Nine months after closing on the property would have been June 1. The contract also states that there are exceptions made or more time given should there be needs from permitting or design elements or anything like that. It's pretty flexible. It's not a drop deadline. In talking with EQUIS over the last two months, they've made a lot of progress. They are not quite to the point of pulling a full building permit and starting. They've submitted plans, paid the plan review fees. We've submitted questions to them. They responded, but we simply are not to that point yet. So what's before you tonight is what would be a two-month extension from today. It's about a six-week extension till August 1st for them to start. Both sides felt that that was very doable. I stressed to them that I don't want to do this again for a second extension, so that's why we settled on August 1. They believe they'll start well in advance of August 1, but that's what's before us tonight. They have been in contact quite a bit with staff over the last two months. I believe that this is moving forward well. It's just behind schedule.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions? Commissioner?
Quick question. Mr. Kramer, if nothing happens between now and August 1st, does it revert back to the city?
The city can choose, or the city commission can choose to purchase the property back for just the land costs. We wouldn't be on the hook for the soft costs, any engineering they have, and plan review fees or anything, but we would have to refund them the purchase price, and then it would revert back to city ownership.
Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept Contract Number 2014-57, Addendum Number Two to the EQUIS Agreement.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Begin voting Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. Aye.
Aye.
That passes five to zero. Excuse me again. Bids for the mower replacement, Parks Department?
We have our Parks Superintendent Brian Bailey here tonight for this item.
Welcome, Brian.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. Thank you for having me here. In 2004, the parks bought a 132-inch rotary mower, self-propelled. Since then, the mower's been well-used and has worn out. They recommended replacement of the mower from seven to 10 years. Till since then, it's, it's 2016, it's been 12 years. And we went through the bid process through, and we invited three, three bids. We came back with Heritage Tractor with $47,235.13. The alternate is for the road package for the mower. It came back as $1,074.12 for a total of $48,309.25. We have this money and budget in our CIP for $52,500. So the Parks and Rec staff recommend that, or would like for us to get the John Deere 1600 Series mower from Heritage Tractor. Do you guys have any questions?
Is this the mower with the double wings? Does it even drop down hydraulically?
Yes, it does have three wings. It is replacing one of our other ones that is similar to that. It is a Toro that we have currently. This one will be a John Deere.
Okay. And could you briefly explain what the road package is for the alternate?
Yep, the road package keeps us, or allows us to drive on the road and not have to trailer it if we have to, without hazard lights flashing and so forth. It is illegal to drive that on the road. So that gives us the opportunity to transfer that mower from park to park without having to trailer.
Okay. Does any commission have questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
My move, we recommend the acceptance of the bid by Heritage Tractor for the purchase of the John Deere 1600 Series 2, to include the roadway package in the amount not to exceed
Second.
Motion and second. Begin voting Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. Thank you. Number 11, Change Order Number One for the Ultraviolet Lamps from Ray Lindsey Company.
Mr. McDonald? Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is related to the recent approval of the purchase of the 480 ultraviolet light bulbs for the disinfection plant at the wastewater plant. The lamps, as ordered, have been delivered and are being installed by city staff. However, we realize that in the request to the commission to approve the bid, neither Ray Lindsey Company nor city staff noticed that the shipping was not included in the purchase price. While it is embarrassing, it is a relatively small amount for a large project, and we've talked to Ray Lindsey Company and city staff to do a better job of catching those things before they come to the commission for approval, avoiding coming back and asking for another approval.
If they didn't include it, it looks like they ought to eat the cost.
Well, they, their quote clearly says freight, shipping, and handling are additional on their price proposal to the city. That is, that was my initial reaction, was give me a price, would stick with it, but they showed me the price, and it's the same sheet we have.
It's a lot of money for shipping.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the change order one to the Ultraviolet Lamps from Ray Lindsey Company in the amount not to exceed $490.66.
Second.
Motion and a second. Begin voting Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. Number 12 is to request to reject bid for a dump truck, Street Department?
This will be Ed Davis, our operations superintendent.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. The issue bringing before the commission tonight is to reject the 2017 one-and-a-half-ton single-axle four-by-four dump truck. Staff recommended to reject of the bid for $61,135,000 for the purchase of this 2017 one-and-a-half-ton single-axle four-by-four from Zekford, 4501 South 4th Street. Staff do, we did send out bids, and now we're trying to get some more competitive bids. We only received the one bid. The budget for 2016 was $52,500, so we're going to look at other options to try to stay within the cost that we had in CIP to purchase to replace this 2004 truck.
Mr. Davis, why do you think you're?
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question. Why just one bid?
Yeah.
What happened?
We sent it out to 12 different dealers, and we only got just the one.
Huh.
And it was a mandatory pre-bid meeting, and they was the only one that showed up. So we're going to try to do some other options on the state bid, look at state bid versus sending it back out for bid, whatever we need to do to try to keep it within that cost.
Okay. So you don't think it was really the cost of what we budgeted it for?
Well, when we did, when I did the numbers for CIP for budget figure, we was under, and that's why I had asked for this amount. Once we did put it out for bid, the truck was a lot more now than it was when I got my budget numbers for CIP.
That's sad, but okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Davis? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we reject the bids for the dump truck for the Street Department as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Begin voting Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Passes five to zero. Number 12, bids for the Landfill Erosion Repairs.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is part of our ongoing responsibility to maintain the landfill in essentially perpetuity. This is the landfill south of Lansing that the city operated as the county landfill for many years. Recent state inspection noted some erosion that needed to be addressed. Staff evaluated that, had plans and specifications prepared, and sought competitive bids. The low bid we received was from Blue Moon Hauling from Smithville, Missouri. We have not worked with that company before. Our office contacted several of their references and found them to be quite satisfactory, and we look forward to starting this project and finishing it quickly.
That property's still being used by the Model Airplane Club, isn't it?
Yeah, I think they've actually expanded their operations somewhat. They're, they're taking on more mowing, I think, the longer runways or something, so we're getting along.
Especially good to do the whole thing.
Yeah.
It's quite, it's quite the sight, if you haven't been out there, to see the planes.
Yeah, I haven't been. It's, it's amazing what they can do with those things.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the bid for the Landfill Erosion Repairs in the amount of $33,493 and awarded to Blue Moon Hauling.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Begin voting Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Passes five to zero. Item number 14, Inspection Contract with Affinis for the 2016 Pavement Management.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is part of the 2016 Pavement Management Program. The city commission recently awarded contracts for granite ceiling several streets throughout the community, as well as over a million dollars in milling and paving to be also throughout the community. This year, our staff is, is extremely busy with a variety of projects, and as we typically have seen, much of the work on pavement management takes more attention than our staff is able to, to put in on it to ensure that our specifications are being met. And we're requesting an inspection contract from Affinis for part-time inspection on the key items. Most of the inspection work will be done by our staff. They will be focusing on items that require longer stays, with some of the work on 20th Street and some other portions throughout the community. The amount of this work is $35,612, and if they don't use all of the money based on the hours, then it gets returned back to the city.
Any questions, Mr. McDonald?
One question. I see that they charge $10 an hour for boat rental. What is that about?
If, if you're inspecting things under the bridges, I think you have to.
Oh, get a little John boat out there and do it.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I would think it'd be a boat on one of our rivers.
Yeah, okay. Now I understand, a little John boat.
Little, little boats are too small for our creeks and way too small, or too big for our creeks and way too small for the bigger river.
Yeah, that's right.
So, it's a good question.
If there's no other questions, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Engineering Service Contract with Affinis Corporation not to exceed $35,612 for the pavement management inspection.
Second then.
Have a motion and a second. Begin voting Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 That passes five to zero. Number 15 is bids for uniforms, public works.
This will be Mr. Ed Davis again.
Bringing before the commission tonight to consider approval for uniform rental bids from Ace Imaging Wear in the amount of $24,857.28. Staff recommends that the city commission award the employees' uniforms service to Ace Imaging Wear in the amount of, like I said, $24,857. They was not the lowest bidder, but however, we did request to get the high-visibility T-shirts for the employees, which they did give us the bid for the 18 weeks versus Walker wanted to give it to us for 52. After doing the calculation of, after that, Imaging Wear was the lowest bidder at that point in time. This bid amount would be firm contract period of two years, beginning at the date awarded, with the option of, by the city, to renew on an annually basis up to a total of four years with the, with new uniforms for the employees.
Who do we currently have it with, then?
Right now, we've got, uh, G and K.
Mr. Davis, they're wearing them right now, aren't they? I've seen, I've thought I've seen Street Crew out there with kind of a neon yellow, greenish shirt. Are they wearing these now?
Well, they, we got, they kind of wear all different colors.
Yeah, I mean, are they?
But yeah, they do have neons.
Yeah.
But what we did is, well, we kind of, we kind of got a uniform policy. Memorial Day through Labor Day, they wear their summer shirts. After that, they go back into their uniform, their new uniform shirts. So normally what we do is we go to different places and get bids and buy these shirts, but this is all in the bid, so we'll have them for 18 weeks, and then after that, then they can either, I don't know, we got to give them back to them or whatever. We only contracted them for 18 weeks for them to be able to wear for summer wear.
I like the idea of the, the neon ones. It really sticks out, and, you know, if you're in full age or something like that, and you're not halfway paying. halfway paying attention driving, if somebody doesn't have neon on, they can get camouflaged in and cause some accidents potentially. But the neon really jumps out at you.
Okay, if there's no additional questions, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the bid for uniforms from Ace Imageware in the amount of, where am I here, $24,857.28.
Second. Motion and a second. Begin voting, Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes five to zero. Thank you. Item number 16, for first consideration, is to amend the animal ordinance.
Chief Pat Kitchens?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, the police department is asking the city commission to place an ordinance on first consideration that establishes new language in Section 18-121, cruelty to and neglect of animals or foul, and to create a new ordinance, Section 18-125, rescue from vehicles. On June 7th, the police department was before the governing body in a study session. We reviewed the ordinances and discussed them. Contained within the policy report is a copy of the draft ordinance as a general overview of that. In Section 18-121, we are enhancing the language that addresses adequate food, adequate water, and other considerations, specifically including shelter. And then, the new ordinance would authorize either a Lovewood police officer or animal control officer to enter into a vehicle to rescue an animal in extreme weather conditions. And the ordinance outlines those, so I would ask you to give that consideration tonight.
Any questions with the chief? If not, is there a consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
There is?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Consent agenda, please.
Mr. Mayor, submit the claims for mayor, excuse me, for May 21st, 2016 through June 10th, 2016, in the amount of $2,299,829.67. Net amount for payroll number 11, effective May 27th of 2016, in the amount of $314,260.23, including police and fire pension of $11,232.85. And payroll number 12, effective June 10th, 2016, in the amount of $307,850.8. No police and fire pension.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Begin voting, Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes five to zero. Any, the commissioners have any comments or anything that they'd like to bring up?
Yeah, I sent an email to Mr. Kramer today. I'm sorry, go first.
No, no.
About mosquitoes. Are they spraying yet?
We're going to start on Thursday.
Okay.
Thursday evening or Friday morning. Is that right, Ed?
Yes, we'll start on Thursday evening. Basically, what we have did already is...
Ed, did you come up to the microphone?
Yeah. Basically, what we have did already, we have kind of did some prep work that we do every year. We go around to the creek areas where there's standing water, and we do have pellets that we throw out to kind of help with the breeding of that.
Right.
So we have did all the measures at this point in time, so we will start. And we normally wait till we get several calls. We got not a lot of calls yet, but we'll go ahead and get started on Thursday, get spraying. We'll spray all the grids, and it go from 7:00 to 10:00 in the evening, in PM.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
It does require a calmness in the weather.
Right, right.
Lisa, did you have anything?
No, I didn't.
Joe?
I've got a couple of things. A couple of weeks ago, I attended the, I think some other people did too, the Unity in the Community Program up at Doherty Park, put on by Shorty Germaine. What's Germaine's last name?
Wilson.
Germaine, Germaine Wilson. Yeah, great event. Well-attended, and thanks for him and the other people who helped put it on, paid for the, provided the food for the people. Was a bit disappointed in our police department. They got smoked in a basketball game. I mean, smoked. And I think it's time for the chief to run a few laps, because I was there, and I told him, "The game's above the rim." I needed him to play above the rim. And his two-inch vertical just didn't quite make it.
And a request to lower the lamp.
Yeah. I also want to thank city manager Kramer for taking care of an issue that happened at Wallman Park on opening day or opening weekend, some misunderstandings on some inclement weather. Mr. Kramer saw the problem and got it corrected immediately, and I think the citizens of Lovewood are appreciative, and we thank Mr. Kramer for getting on that real quickly. I attended the international graduation batch ceremony, CGSC, along with Commissioner Bow, with I know Commissioner Bowder and Commissioner Weekly last Thursday. It's always a nice event, and I also attended CGSC graduation on Friday, Friday morning at the parade grounds, another nice event. Those folks are gone, other people are starting to come in, so we'll see a whole new class. The international class, international officers class this year will be the largest one in history. I think 160-some international officers will be coming in. I know that we have our welcoming here, I think, July 12th.
I think it's July 12th.
Is it July 12th? I'm sorry.
I thought it was July 12th before, the day before budget. Well, sometime. I'm sure Tammy will let us know again, whenever it is. And happy birthday to the United States Army. Today's the 241st birthday of the United States Army, July, June 14, 1775. So happy birthday to the Army.
I just want to say thank you to the VFW Post 56. This past Sunday, they had the first Gold Star Father's Day event, and I went to that, and it was a very nice event, having said so for the organization it represents. But it was attended well by people. People had a good time, they were there, group was great. Just want to give a thank you to the VFW hosting.
Paul, do you have anything? Mr. Dawson?
No.
Nothing? Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Begin voting, Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.